These words for the pledge of allegiance and the prayer. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, how you are today in America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the citizens' flag, a pledge of allegiance to be a Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Mr. Stewart, would you mind praying for us tonight, please?
Glad to. Y'all pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and thank you so much for who you are in our lives, Lord, that you are our Savior. Lord, we ask that you protect our community and our first responders as you have always done. We thank you so much for that. Lord, we just ask that you're with us tonight as we undertake the business of the city that give us clear minds to make the best decisions that we need to for this upcoming year in our budget, Lord. These things we pray in Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Michael. Do you have any statements by citizens? Statements by citizens? We'll move on to item number one, to consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of the August 16th, 2025 regular meeting and the August 25th, 2025 special meeting.
Mayor, I move that we accept the minutes of the August 18th, 2025 regular meeting and the August 25th, 2025 special meeting.
Second.
The motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That and an opposed motion will carry. Item number two is we will hold a public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget.
Mayor, members of council. Didn't sound like it was on. Tonight, we have the public hearing on the city's proposed tax rate. As y'all will recall, over the summer and through our various meetings that we've had, we've had long discussions regarding the proposed tax rate, proposed increases to our water improvement fee and to our wastewater improvement fee. And those discussions made sure that we understood the challenges that we're facing the city as well as providing for the services that our citizens expect. Tonight, the proposed tax rate before you is 0.555 per $100 valuation. The no new revenue rate is 0.53607. The proposed tax rate for FY '26, 0.4785 is for maintenance and operations. The cemetery fund receives 0.03 per $100 valuation. In our interest in sinking, our debt service is 0.0465 per $100 valuation. Again, the no new revenue rate is 0.5367. One penny of the city's property tax generates approximately $76,000. Guess that's where we're at right now regarding the proposed rate. I'll answer any questions council may have. And dance off to the dice. Anything else?
So the first item on the agenda was the budget of public hearing. So do we need to do anything? Can we just flip off?
I can do this one just while I'm trying to have the tax rate in my hand and have the budget behind it. Mayor and members of council, we have provided you the budget letter that has been presented. There's copies in the back for for our citizens as well, and this will also be placed on our webpage for everyone. The proposed annual budget for the city of Levelland. And again, our budget year runs October 1, 2025 through September 30th, 2026. The proposed budget is $27.95 million. 11.5 million is our general fund, 0.38 million is the cemetery. Our debt service is 0.83. Special revenue, capital financing, our enterprise is our water wastewater sanitation funds is approximately 7.5 million. Our wastewater improvement fund is about $3.7 million. This is what's in reserve. When you look in the budget, you will actually see in that fund, it's about 20 million because the certificates of obligation that were issued in 2022 have been placed into that fund so we can pay out of it. The Community Development Corporation's budget, as we've seen before, is almost a million dollars. And the Economic Development Corporation is $2.4 million. As we've discussed over the past year or the past few months regarding this budget, we have done a deep dive into the city's finances and where we're going. Our general fund is a budget that is supported by property taxes. Approximately 35.2% is funded by the ad valorem taxes and about 32 and a half cents is funded by sales tax. We also, in this year's budget, took our property taxes from about a 96% collection to about 98% collection because that's what it's been averaging. We also looked at moving our sales tax up to 4%, just what we're seeing in the economy, what we're seeing in projections. So we feel very, very comfortable with those numbers. Within our budget, we have placed in a 3% cost of living adjustment for all the employees. And as we go into this year, we will be looking at our salaries and surveys to make sure we take care of our fire department as well as all employees certification pay. Cemetery fund, again, is funded from three cents from the property taxes. And we continue to have a cemetery that we get good compliments on from the staff and for the job that they do. Debt service for this coming year. Council on August 25th authorized certificates of obligation to build a new animal services facility. We're in the process of working with Freezing Nichols on that item. And hopefully, we can have that item to bid and all of that by early '26 so we can get busy moving on this item. The Economic Development Corporation is, again, moving forward with a lot of great projects that are in place. Probably the area that's the proudest in this budget is the Community Development Corporation has authorized almost $600,000 towards the park, city parks, to enhance it, fix some ball fields, do some trail extensions, put some fountains for water quality and for aesthetic reasons in Lobo Lake and Brushier Lake. Fake pickleball complex. And again, just doing some things to enhance city park and make it strong utility rates. We replaced all of the meters. We're starting to see the new readings. And again, we issued bonds for those new water meters. And the revenue that we were not capturing due to meters not reading correctly due to inefficient meters, that captured revenue will go towards paying back that bond. We also recommended improving the water improvement fee from a dollar to $5, which council approved on August 25th. This is primarily due to the city of Lubbock increasing their costs for the treatment of our water that we receive from the Canadian River Municipal Water Authority. And we also improved our wastewater improvement fee from 2162 to 28 per month to cover the cost of the new bond issuance for the wastewater improvement plant. And again, council, go back to our debt service rate. A portion of that new debt service rate is to pay for that wastewater plant. We didn't want to put it all within the wastewater improvement fee, so we placed them within our general funds debt service to manage that item. We're not recommending any adjustments in the rates. We did that last year by creating a new tier for 20,000 gallons and above. And that's where we're at on the proposed budget there.
Thank you. So at this time, we will open the public hearing. We'll open that at 6:10 PM. Anyone would like to speak? That podium is open.
After the budget and the taxes, we can just go on.
According to the agenda, we'll do them separately, do the budget, and then we will do the tax rate. So currently, the dice is open at 6:10 for the budget. And if no one is going to speak, then we'll close that public hearing. And I still show that to be 6:10 PM, but according to legal counsel, that's fine. So we will move on to item number four, just to hold a public hearing on the proposed tax rate for the fiscal year 2025-2026. We will open that at 6:11 PM.
Is that where we go?
Yes, ma'am.
I sent a letter to Mr. Fisher and asked him to forward that to all of council regarding the budget and the tax rate. My question to all of you as council is when is enough enough? You're going to raise the water? You're going to raise the sewer? You're going to raise the tax rate? When is enough? For the average family that's trying to make it, they're having a tough time. Real estate is falling. You have realtors on your board. When is enough enough? When do you guys say enough? That's what I'm wondering. And now you just took out another $3 million bond, correct, Mr. Fisher? For animal shelter?
Yes, ma'am, for the animal shelter.
I didn't know about that till it was over. So I'm wondering, like, when is enough enough? Like, we need the streets fixed and stuff like that. And it's like, we don't... How old is the animal shelter we have? I think we discussed that when I was on council, right? I mean, I'm just kind of shocked and wondering, when is enough enough? Because people are going to start moving. And that's what I'm worried about. We've already lost a tremendous amount of kids at the school, which generally means they will follow behind them. They will depart our community. So I want y'all to be thinking about that when you take out your next bonds.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak on the tax rate? Public hearing? If no one else would like to speak, we will close that at 6:12 PM. Moving on to item number four is to consider and take necessary action on the annual services agreement with the Levelland Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Mayor and members of council, this is an agreement that the city has with the Chamber of Commerce, who has been a great partner for the city of Levelland as they promote our community, as they bring in events to our community that helps not only our hotels with occupants, but also with our businesses here in town as people shop here for events. And we encourage them to come back and be part of Levelland. This agreement is very similar to what you've seen in the past. Couple of the programs have changed, but all in all, it's pretty identical to what you've seen. There is an adjustment in the keep Levelland beautiful side, just for a 3% pay increase within that department. But staff recommends approval of this agreement and our continued partnership with the Chamber of Commerce.
I move that we approve the annual service agreement with the Levelland Community Chamber of Commerce fiscal year 2025-2026.
The motion in a second. All in favor? With that and an opposed motion carries. Item number five is to consider and take necessary action on a replat request for 319 East Highway 114 and 323 East Highway 114, Levelland, Texas 7336. Legal description, AA Barton Levelland Block 1, Lot 10 and Lot 11, the West 12, and AA Barton Levelland Block 1, Lot 11, East 45 and Lot 12, all of Lot 12.
Later, Nancy. So to accommodate the construction of Take 5, whole change in Seven Brew Coffee at 319 and 323 East Highway 114, the current owner of the real property, Red Sky LLC, is requesting a re-subdivision replat of all of Lot 10 and the West 12 feet of Lot 11 and the East 45 feet of Lot 11 and all of Lot 12 of the AA Barton addition to the city of Levelland, Hawkley County, Texas, as shown by plat record in Cabinet A, Slide 104 of the plat records of Hawkley County, Texas. Red Sky LLC is also requesting to change the name of the re-subdivision to Level Latte Reserve, if I'm saying that right. And the proposed re-subdivision replat is in compliance with current city code ordinances. So basically, all they're wanting to do, the way the appraisal has it, so we don't get confused here. There are three lots there, but the appraisal has two parcels. And so they're basically moving the line to increase the size for Take 5 and reducing the size for the Seven Brew so it'll accommodate both constructions. And that's basically all they're wanting to do.
On these plats that you gave us, it shows that the Seven Brew is on the eastern side, but yet the pits that they dug for that Take 5 is on the western side.
So the pit that you see is actually for the Seven Brew because it's a prefab building that they're sitting in the ground. So I think there's been some people that are kind of thinking that that was going to be for the Take 5, but that's actually for the Seven Brew, and that's actually the way they construct those. They bring them prefabbed and they set them in the ground like, I don't know, four or five different... Yeah, correct. Yes, sir. So Seven Brew in the corner, Take 5 on the west side. Yes, sir.
Their PR announcement for the city of Plains, you said they were bringing 50 jobs there. So I'm going to cross my fingers and hope that we get a job count. That's close to being that high for this location. Very, very exciting. Many growth in our community. Proud of it. And I know it's created a lot of work for your department.
Absolutely. We'll take it.
Great attitude. These designs are unique, for sure. Those businesses are going to be close together on a busy corner. But our codes departments looked into this. The Texas Department of Transportation did major research on this project.
Level Latte Reserve.
Clever.
Any other questions or concerns or?
I move that we accept a proposed re-subdivision and replat that is in compliance with the current city code ordinances for the Take 5, whole change, Seven Brew slash Red Sky LLC, the renaming of theirs, subdivision to Level Latte Reserve.
The motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That and an opposed motion carries. Next item is item number six, to consider and take necessary action to approve ordinance 1098, amending chapter four, Article 4.900, food service establishments, to provide for the regulation of grease traps and interceptors for food service establishments on a first reading.
The city of Levelland is requesting the amendment of Article 4.900, food establishments, by providing for the regulation of grease traps and interceptors for food establishments by adding section 4.911, grease interceptors and waste disposal, and section 4.912, installation and maintenance requirements for grease interceptors. To protect our city sanitary and wastewater treatment system from facilities generating fats, oils, and greases resulting from food manufacturing, processing, preparation, or food service, a trap is necessary. A trap protects against clogs, which helps prevent sewer backup and ultimately protects the environment from overflow. Currently, the city of Levelland Code of Ordinances doesn't adequately regulate grease traps for food establishments. Traps are addressed in the city of Levelland Code of Ordinances under Article 11.1300, industrial waste. But this article does not specifically address traps for food establishments. The Texas Department of Environmental Quality, TCEQ, does regulate and require grease traps for food establishments and provides a criteria and overall requirements for grease traps, including applicability, size, installation, maintenance, and disposal. TCEQ also provides a model ordinance, which is the basis for the proposed ordinance. And the proposed ordinance will also work alongside Chapter 10 of the International Plumbing Code, which provides general requirements for traps, interceptors, and separators. So we're asking for council to approve this ordinance. Because, I'll give you a good example. So one of the requirements that TCEQ has for food establishments is a grease manifest or a manifest where they are supposed to be providing documentation every time their grease traps are being emptied out. Who picks it up? How much they picked up? Where it's going? When it gets dumped? All that good stuff. And at the moment, we actually only have one restaurant that does that voluntarily. We really never had nothing in place to require from food establishments. TCEQ requires it, but we never had nothing in place. So that was one of the big deals there. So we don't really have nothing in place, and I really wanted to get something in our ordinance so that way we can, I think, you know, regulate it properly. So...
Will this apply to those folk that have commercial kitchens in their homes? Will they have to comply with the same?
Um, I'm not sure. The way, from my understanding, it does not apply to residential dwellings. Anything commercial. Slater, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think anything commercial, commercial kitchen, it can be even in a hospital that this would apply to.
If they have a commercial kitchen in their homes, it doesn't apply.
It's set up to where residential and commercial, that's going to be governed by the residential parts, but you're still going to have... I mean, we're probably better regulated today in our residential parts than we have been in our commercial. That's what he's trying to catch upon and get us up with where other towns are.
It is going to include churches? The kitchen or the churches cooking?
Yes. If it's not residential, then it's going to fall under this. Yes, sir.
Eli, thanks for seeing a hole and coming in and bringing us the proper eyes and legal analysts to get it fixed. Thank you for that. It is important to protect our water supply with this. It's very important.
That's basically all I have on that one.
And so how will we start in initiating this change with our current businesses?
Um, that's actually something that Dean and I were speaking earlier and trying to figure out how we're going to let all the food establishments know, whether it's, I don't know, probably sending them all notices, you know, ahead of time that, you know, if this is something y'all approve, that, you know, maybe we can give them so much time to say, hey, you know, here in 30, 60, 90 days, you know, we're going to start enforcing this or whatever y'all think is a good time to give them. But we'll definitely have to give them a notice to let them know that this is going to happen. So...
I'd just like to make sure we, and I know you will, but really, really communicate that well to them. I know we've got some partners that can help us communicate that to them too for questions that'll arise for them. We don't want to be a disruption in their business.
Right. Absolutely.
I'll present the proposed ordinance to the council. This will be an ordinance amending the city of Levelland Code of Ordinances 1997, chapter four, businesses and commerce. Article 4900, food service establishments, by providing for the regulation of and concerning grease traps and interceptors for food service establishments by adding a new section 4.911, grease interceptors and waste disposal, and a new section 4.912, installation and maintenance requirements for grease interceptors, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative of all prior ordinances and repeal conflicting ordinances, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing a penalty clause, providing for publication in the official newspaper of the city, and providing an effective date. Whereas the city has adopted regulations requiring the installation and operation of grease traps for restaurants and other businesses that discharge or have the potential to discharge fats, oils, grease, and grease into the public sewer system, now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Levelland, that the Code of Ordinances is amended to read as follows. Applicability and prohibitions. This ordinance shall apply to all food service establishment users of the sanitary sewer. Grease traps or grease interceptors shall not be required for residential users. Food service establishments generating fats, oils, or greases as a result of food manufacturing process, preparation, or food service shall install, use, and maintain appropriate grease traps or interceptors as required by section 4.912. Food service establishments include but are not limited to restaurants, food manufacturers, food processors, hospitals, hotels and motels, prisons, nursing homes, and any other facility preparing, serving, or otherwise making any food stuff available for consumption. Four, no person may intentionally or unintentionally allow the direct or indirect discharge of any petroleum oil, non-biodegradable cutting oil, mineral oil, or any fats, oils, or greases of animal or vegetable origin into the sanitary sewer, and such amounts as to cause interference with the collection and treatment system or to cause pollutants to pass through the treatment works and into the environment. Section two, that the city of Levelland Code of Ordinances be amended to include a new section 4.912 entitled installation and maintenance requirements for grease interceptors. A1, new food service establishments, which are newly proposed or constructed, or existing facilities which will be expanded or renovated to include a food service facility where such facility did not previously exist, shall be required to design, install, operate, and maintain a grease trap interceptor in accordance with the International Plumbing Code or other applicable ordinances. Two, existing food service establishments. Existing grease traps interceptors must be operated and maintained in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendation and in accordance with this ordinance. Three, all grease trap interceptor waste shall be properly disposed of at a food service establishment in accordance with federal, state, and local regulation. B, cleaning and maintenance. If grease traps and grease interceptors... Let me start over. Grease traps and grease interceptors shall be maintained in an efficient operating condition at all times. And four, grease trap self-cleaning operators must submit a completed self-cleaning request to the regulatory authority for approval. Five, self-cleaners must adhere to all requirements, procedures, and detailed record-keeping outlined in their approved application to ensure compliance with the ordinance. Six, violations incurred by grease trap self-cleaners will be subject to enforcement action, including fines and or removal from the self-cleaner program. Seven, cleaning schedules. A, grease traps and grease interceptors shall be cleaned as often as necessary to ensure that sediment and floating materials do not accumulate to impair the efficiency of the grease trap interceptor, to ensure the discharge is in compliance with local discharge limits, and to ensure no visible grease is observed in discharge. Eight, manifest requirements. Each pump out of a grease trap or interceptor must be accompanied by a manifest to be used for record-keeping purposes. Persons who generate, collect, and transport grease waste shall maintain a record of each individual collection and deposit. Alternative treatments. At nine, a person commits an offense if the person introduces or causes, permits, or suffers the introduction of any surfactant solvent or emulsifier into a grease trap. Surfactants, solvents, and emulsifiers are materials which allow the grease to pass from the trap into the collection system and include but are not limited to enzymes, soap, diesel, kerosene, terpene, and other solvents. The schedule of civil penalties. One, if the regulatory authority determines that a generator is responsible for a blockage of a collection system line, the generator shall owe a civil penalty of $1,000 for the first violation, $1,500 for the second violation, and $2,000 for the third violation within a two-year period. Continuous violations shall result in an increase in penalty by $500 and may result in termination of services. Two, any person violating the provisions of this ordinance shall be subject to a written warning for the first violation. for the first violation, a one thousand dollar civil penalty for the second violation, a fifteen hundred dollar civil penalty for the third violation, and a two thousand dollar civil penalty for the fourth violation within a two-year period. Consistent violations will result in a five hundred dollar increase in civil penalty and may result in termination of service. Introduced, passed, and approved on this first reading this eighth day of September twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Reading that. It is an action item. We will need a motion to approve that ordinance. It's ten ninety eight. I lost it.
You got it?
Slowly but sure.
I move that we take uh that we approve ordinance number ten ninety eight amending Chapter four, Article four point nine, food service establishments to provide for the regulation of grease trap and interceptor for food service establishments on a first reading.
Motion and a second all in favor? With that, none opposed, the motion carries. Item number seven is to consider and take necessary action on resale properties. Sixteen oh four Houston Street Legal Description Law five, Block one, Williams Edition, City of Loveland, Hockley County, Texas, or one nine four one nine.
Texas Communities Group recently completed a bid on one trust property jointly owned by all all taxing entities. The property has been paid for and is now pending approval from the taxing entities. And accordingly, we are now asking the City Council to consider approving the resale of this property for a total of one thousand dollars from the highest bidder. Uh, again, the property being sixteen oh four Houston Street, Lot five, Block one of the Williams Edition, City of Loveland, Hockley County, Texas. Uh, previous owner was Dozier Enterprises LLC, and the winning bidders were Richard and Tammy Reyes. Richard actually came to visit me not long after they put in the bid. Um, they provided um a signed compliance agreement that I like to try to do with all uh of the trust properties that go for sale. Um, that basically tells them where they're basically agreeing to bring it into compliance if it's a dilapidated structure or if it's just junk weeds in this case. Um, the mobile home that was there was uh demolished um earlier this year. Um, so it was just an empty lot. Um, there was some um some brush, some dead tree limbs, weeds, and they have already been working on getting that into compliance. So um so they did sign that compliance agreement. And of course, um, y'all have a copy of the the tax deed as well. So.
For going over that cert that compliance agreement with them firsthand, I think that really helps.
Absolutely.
Encouraging to get one more back on the tax road. Several more to go, but one more back on the tax road.
That's all I have on that one.
I move that we approve the sale of the trust property to the highest bidder, Richard and Tammy Reyes, for a thousand dollars.
Second by Mr. Lynn Nessman, all in favor?
Eli, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
We would buy that that the law, do they have to build in there or just keep it clean for as long as they have it?
No, they they don't have to build on it, but I mean, we prefer that they would use it more than just an empty lot, but it's it's not required.
As long as we keep it clean.
Yes, as long as they keep it in compliance, you know, with weeds, junk, or whatever. I mean, they keep it a nice looking empty lot. Um, like I said, we we'd prefer for it to be used, but as long as they keep it in compliance and, you know, I think it'll be all right.
Oh, it's it's all right to set another mobile home there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any more questions on item number seven? Can we vote on that one again, please? All in favor?
Aye.
That and none opposed. We'll move on to motion carries. Item number eight. Consider and take necessary action on an agreement with the in the Texas Department of Transportation for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five routine airport maintenance program. Okay. Twenty five, twenty six routine airport maintenance program.
Mayor and members of council, this is kind of a housekeeping item. This this item comes before council every September. Um, this allows the city to do what the agreement basically says is uh routine airport maintenance out there and Tax Dock reimburses us for this. Um, this item, uh, the county also has to approve it, which they will uh consider it next Monday, the fifteenth, and then we'll get it sent into the state. And then expenditures after it's received and accepted by the state will be eligible for funding up to a hundred thousand dollars from uh Tax Dock Aviation. We recommend approval.
Mayor, I recommend the uh move that the council agree uh approve the agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation for fiscal year. Did you say twenty four, twenty five, or twenty five, twenty six?
Twenty five, twenty six.
Twenty five, twenty six. Uh, routine airport maintenance program.
And authorize city manager to execute any necessary documents.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The second by Miss McCabe, all in favor?
Aye.
That and opposed, motion carries. Number nine is to consider and take necessary action on a payment request from Ameresco in the amount of three hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars and seventy four cents for the water meter project pursuant to the contract approved between the city and Ameresco in October of twenty twenty four.
Mayor and council members, this is a payment request uh number eight for Ameresco in the amount of three hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars and seventy four cents. Uh, staff would recommend approval of this item.
Mayor, I recommend the approval of the payment. Ameresco in the amount of three hundred and fifty nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety two dollars, seventy four cents for the water meter project pursuant to the contract approved between the city and Ameresco in October of twenty twenty four. Thank you.
The motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, motion carries. Next item is item number ten to consider and take necessary action on a payment request from M H Civil Constructors Incorporated in the amount of one million, sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty nine cents for the new one point eight M G D wastewater treatment plant pursuant to the contract approved between the city and M H Civil Constructors on May fifth, twenty twenty five.
Mayor and council members, this is payment application number two from M H Civil Constructors. Uh, they are making good progress out there and we recommend approval of this payment.
Questions or discussion on this?
I move to approve a payment request number two from M H Civil in the amount of one million, sixteen thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty nine cents for the new one point eight M G D wastewater treatment plant pursuant to the contract approved between the city and M H Civil Con- Constructors on May fifth, twenty twenty five. And authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents for payment.
The second for Mr. Powell, all in favor?
Aye.
That and opposed, motion carries. Item number eleven is discussion about the proposed fiscal year twenty six budget.
Mayor and council members, um as we've stated earlier, and we've had the public carings on the tax rate and also on the budget. Couple of things that uh the August twenty fifth meeting, we uh approved the purchase of new police vehicles, and we also approved uh the lease agreement, which that will more than likely be executed after October first. Um, but we told you once we got through that lease, we would look at the capital to see um what would we be placing in the budget for purchase and then where we're going. So in the budget letter that y'all were provided today, uh, the first one was in early August. This one is September eighth. It lists out the items that uh we have placed in the budget. Um, part of that is uh purchase of a new uh animal control officer unit vehicle and four admin vehicles for the police department. Uh, purchase of the police department firearms of twenty four thousand. You want to say anything about this other item, or do you want to wait and surprise them later?
We don't want.
Mayor and council members, uh, just upon y'all's advice and encouragement, uh, Loveland P D applied for a grant with Hockley County Endowment, and that was received uh today. We were notified. So uh.
Congratulations, Chief O'Brien.
Oh, that's the kind of surprise we like. Okay. I'm a little nervous.
That's great to see the community support that you so wonderfully deserve.
Uh, within this budget, we have allocated funding for uh one ton heavy-duty uh diesel uh for the fire department, replacement of a loader for the street department, um cyclone fence and a generator at the new uh tower site. Uh, everything is out there. We have to wait forty-five days before it can start going vertical. So hopefully by November, we'll we'll be seeing that uh tower replaced. Uh, in cemetery, we have some mower replacements and also a lowering device replacement. Um, in the water uh department, hydraulic pump and two F one fifty pickups, signage at the landfill, and wind fencing. Again, we repair or add about fifty thousand dollars every year to the land landfill fencing, uh civic center improvements, um floor scrubber to help clean up that place, make it look better. Again, parks and rec enhancement from the Loveland Community Development Corporation, about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars total. Um, we also placed funds in there for our centennial celebration funding. Um, we will also uh place money in there for tree removal and trimming out at City Park. Man, we got a lot of dead limbs, a lot of dead trees. We'll be working on getting those out. Uh, some ADA accessible playground upgrades. Um, cemetery irrigation upgrades, ten thousand, um expansion of city hall conference room, um academy sponsorships. We're going to continue to sponsor uh someone through the the academy, Police Academy at South Plains College. Uh, table and chair replacement at Civic Center. And uh, again, you see the uh new animal services facility that we're currently under the way. We have had numerous meetings on our budget. We have discussed them in budget work sessions. We have discussed them at council meetings. We have discussed them at Loveland listens. We have had a very thorough discussion about everything that's in this budget, and we've uh prepared a budget letter that outlines what we're doing and where the money comes from. And I'm proud of the work that's been done. Cynthia and Eric did a great job. Max did a super job of doing the behind-the-scenes research work. So I think we've got a good, solid budget that we can continue to grow with, that we can continue uh to invest in our community as we ask others to invest in our town than we have to invest. And we're trying to do that in various areas uh that need that improvement, and we will continue to look for ways to make Loveland even better than it is today. But any questions from council, anything we may have missed, anything we need to clarify to help you guys?
I said before, that letter sure does help. It kind of breaks that down to where we can understand it a lot easier. The the typical personnel in the county, community can understand it a lot better, too. Appreciate that the newspaper printed it almost in its entirety in the in one of the the past editions as well. So thank you, guys.
Mayor, I just want to say I appreciate the work that you have done, the staff. Uh, I think a lot of the things that are in the budget are are things that continue to help move Loveland forward. Um, and I think that's been the goal of this council ever since at least I've been on. And uh, I think, you know, there's there's very few thrill thrills in there, but the uh the things that are in there are necessary, and uh the things that are in there are are things that we've just got to have to continue to operate a very progressive city.
I agree on that.
Any more discussion on item number eleven?
We will post this newsletter.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number twelve, City Manager Report, Staff Updates, Project Updates, Staff Citizen Recognition. Items of community interest, no actual be taken.
Mayor and council, we were to do a staff recognition at the beginning of this meeting, but uh we found out from the recipient that he was supposed to be in Austin at eight o'clock in the morning, and he was going to drive after the council meeting. So we just pushed it to October, told him to drive safe. Um, these are becoming common, but I I don't want us to ever uh forget the job that our employees do. We've received another compliment on Joe Medina uh at Cemetery for customer service. Just the way that our employees, especially out at the cemetery, help our citizens, help our guests as they're going through these challenging times is phenomenal. They do a really good job of uh taking care of them and helping them uh understand and and how those processes work. So I can't ever uh thank them enough. We have approximately fifty percent of our employees have completed CPR, first aid, and A E D training. Uh, Jeff Ferris with Loveland Fire has been providing that. And hopefully by the end of this month, we'll have everybody trained. And by the end of this month, we will have A E Ds and first aid kits um throughout city facilities that in the event something happens, we are prepared uh to take care of our employees, take care of our guests who may be at our facility. So uh, we appreciate Jeff, uh, we appreciate uh Patty over there of allowing him the time to do this. Uh, we submitted six candidates for leadership Loveland. We uh again are investing in our employees. Uh, we think that uh they will learn a lot in this program. Uh, Mary and her team have put together a great uh curriculum for this. But I think uh our employees will also make some significant contributions to this as well. So we're excited about that. Lobo Lake Park, um we will be securing the south end of the lake uh for an indefinite time period. We have a lot of erosion in that area. And uh, we don't want anyone to get hurt or anyone to get trapped by uh standing on some dirt, falling into the lake, and then the dirt falling onto them. So we're going to be securing that. Uh, I know it's prime fishing area. Everybody likes that spot, but uh, we've got to make sure that we protect the public as much as we can and then start working on a solution to minimize that erosion. Uh, one of the thoughts was to drain the the lake significantly down. Uh, we don't want to do that right now. Our lake looks good. We've got a trout fishing coming up. So maybe later towards winter or even late winter, we'll look at trying to drop that down some and see what can be done. Uh, the twenty twenty five Silco project is tentatively scheduled for the fifteenth and sixteenth. They will also be going back into the um Country Club Edition and repairing a couple of streets in there. Uh, the SPAG annual meeting is Wednesday, September seventeenth, six o'clock in Lubbock. If you want to go, uh, let Andrea know by this Friday. The Chambers Volunteer Appreciation Banquet is Friday, October third, from eleven thirty to one. Uh, we'll have a table, so uh if you want to go to that as well, um, let the city know so we can make sure we have your your spot reserved. Um, Loveland City Council meeting. We have one next week, the fifteenth, where we will consider the adoption of the budget and then the adoption of the tax rate. And then we were going to meet on the twenty second, uh, but we pushed it to the twenty ninth so that uh we can meet with members of the L C D C to discuss the swimming pool assessment that's been conducted uh by Councilman Hunzaker. And then at the Monday, October sixth meeting, uh, will also be a joint meeting, but this will be with the Planning and Zoning Commission to discuss the proposed zoning ordinance uh that's out there. The the new draft will be out next week. When we get it, uh, we will get it to you guys. And with that, there will be a note that basically asks you to encourage you to review it. Make sure you understand if there's any questions, comments, clarifications, or something that it didn't get quite addressed, that we get those together so we can get that to Freeze Nichols prior to the meeting. So it'll be a very productive meeting. And they go, keep Loveland beautiful fall sweep is Saturday, October eleventh, from nine to eleven thirty. Anything else? No, I didn't. I forgot about it. When is it? October fourth, Cork and Keg, and follow for the Wallace. Guys, we've got a very busy next couple of months. The twentieth is uh Cotton and Crew, also following with the Wallace. Our Public Safety Crews, our street maintenance. Our public safety crews, our street maintenance, everybody are stretched, but uh I have visited with all of them, and they're ready to meet whatever challenge that may come up within our community. Again, we've got the best employees out there. They do what it takes to take care of our community, and and I appreciate everything they do regularly to go above and beyond.
Those events don't happen without our police department, our fire department, COE, and our public works and streets departments that make make them happen beforehand and clean up after. So it it's easy to not notice that and think about it, but there's many moving parts there that the City of Loveland's involved in in an event that we don't host.
Yes, sir. Oh, College Avenue. Uh, soon as we get College Avenue done, we get a leak on it, and um it's kind of out of our hands. Tech Dot has basically said that any leak that occurs on college, uh we have to bring in an outside contractor because they understand Tech Dot standards and the way they want it done. So uh we have to default to that, but we got the leak repaired uh through this contractor, and it is a local contractor, so that's a good thing. And um hopefully, we don't have any more. Uh, we will end up paying, sir. It's it usually happens that way. We had the big one in front of Dairy Queen. We ended up paying for all of that as well. So. Yes?
But it has been repaired, so now it'll just be patching and getting that.
Yes, ma'am. I think it's all patched, repaired, and everything's good.
Great.
So.
Any more questions for James?
Maybe Neil, chief.
Okay, that concludes the city manager report and no other action items, so with that, we are adjourned. Thank you all.